Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 2, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Second?
Motion by Kicker, second by Grischoviac. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. We're up to the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. And our first one to consider, item one, is to approve the minutes of May 19, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May 19, 2020.
Second?
Motion by Grischoviac, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are confirmed. Next is to consider the minutes from the local Board of Appeal and Equalization, May 11, 2020.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Second?
Motion by Johnson. Was that a second by Demmer?
Yep.
Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed? And motion carries one abstention. Board member Wells. That's right.
Good catch.
All right. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. And the first one is item three on the agenda, is to adopt Resolution 20-51, Accepting Grant Funds from Coon Creek Watershed District and Approve Water Quality Cost Share Agreement. City staff recently submitted a water quality cost share program application, and I love this one, to the CCWD for Joma Cutting Edge Snowplow Blades. Well, CCWD is of course Coon Creek Watershed District, and I like to know acronyms. Joma is actually a brand name. It doesn't need to be capitalized, it could just be Joma. All right. So, Water Quality Cost Share Program Application to the CCWD for the Cutting Edge Snowplow Blades. These blades are designed to better follow the contour of roads, thus reducing the need for excess salt and anti-ice chemical treatments in an effort to reduce the effects of chloride loading on water bodies. The city was awarded up to $8,726 of the purchase cost, or 50 percent. And the Coon Creek Watershed District agrees to disperse 80 percent of the approved cost share amount, which is $6,980, once the attached agreement is executed. The city will implement the project by December 31, 2021, and the Coon Creek Watershed District will disperse any additional remating funds upon proof of completion. Should that be 2021, really? Or not this year?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-51, Accepting Grant Funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District, and authorize execution of the Water Quality Cost Share Agreement. And then the second and last item on the consent agenda, which is item four on tonight's agenda, is to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor licensing to allow for expanded outdoor service. Governor Walz's Order 20-63 allows restaurants to open with limited outdoor seating beginning June 1. In an attempt to assist businesses with reopening, staff created a temporary outdoor dining policy which provides the guidelines under which our liquor license holders could expand their premises. Staff has verified that all requirements have been met and approved temporary expansions for the following locations until October 31, 2020. And that's at Broadway Pizza, 3420 129th Avenue, CR Billiards at 8525 Cottonwood Street, Pappy's Cafe at 11496 Martin Street, TGIF at 12519 Riverdale Drive, El Loro at 11590 Robinson Drive, and Texas Roadhouse at 2780 Main Street. So, we're looking, I'm sorry, we're looking to ratify the temporary expansion of liquor license premises as outlined above through October 31, 2020.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd move approval and ratification of the items on the consent agenda.
Sorry. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
So, I had a question on the expansion. We've listed these couple of businesses. As I was driving here, I saw a couple of other ones that are getting things set up in their parking lots. Can we assume that as long as they are complying with the policy, not in this ordinance, that this ordinance, or this expansion is not limited to the people listed here today? I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, we're taking them as they come. I've currently approved two additional, and that's probably what you're seeing. And there's a third that's in the works. So, we'll approve them administratively and then ask you to ratify them at the next council meeting. But as soon as they comply with what we've asked them to do, they'll be allowed to do their opening.
Okay. I was just wondering if we had to reapprove, or if we could...
Constantly ongoing. You'll see it several times here, so...
Thank you.
Councilmember Demmer?
I'm the same one. Just so people who are in the restaurant business know what to do, is this for anyone who expands out into their parking lot, or is there more? How would a business know that they should come ask for this expanded license?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, we did do an email blast. We've got it on our website. And I emailed all of our liquor license holders directly with the correct forms. And so, we hope that they know. If not, you're hearing it now on TV. So, let us know if you need us to help you get reopened under the current restrictions.
Thank you.
Something tells me if they don't check email, they're not watching cable TV right now.
You don't know. It could happen.
That's true. Our little cable channel really gets out there, you know? All right. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is carried. We are up to new business, and we are up to number, item five, to consider Resolution 20-3/12, Adopting Assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 20-3. The city is proposing to improve approximately 900 feet of University Avenue located north of Main Street by reconstruction as part of Project 20-3 led by the city of Blaine. And I'm assuming since we've been through this a couple of times, we're not going through another proposal tonight, or another presentation? Okay.
Correct.
All right. So, I'll just hit the highlights then. In conjunction with city staff, the city of Blaine completed plans, advertised the project, and received bids May 19, 2020. We're being asked to adopt the assessments at this time. The project will be led by the city of Blaine, which includes Design and Construction Administration, and a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine addressing cost. And maintenance obligations for each city was approved by the city council at its December 17, 2019 meeting. Coon Rapids City Council also held a public hearing for this project on April 7, 2020. As city buildings were closed to the public due to the COVID-19 pandemic, a follow-up notice was mailed to residents on March 27 detailing the steps to file a written objection to be considered by city council. Let's see. And we had, I think we had one objection filed on that. So, at this point, we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-3/12, Adopting the Assessments for Project 20-3.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Grischoviac?
No.
Was I right? Councilmember Kicker? These screens make it even tougher now.
They do. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 20-3/12, Adopting the Assessments for Project 20-3.
Second?
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac?
Just a clarification from Republic Works. It's a joint project with the city of Blaine. I'm just wondering, why is our share slightly more than half? If it's a $300,000 project, why is our share going in 175, not 150? Just a clarification.
Yes, Councilmember Grischoviac, members of the council, that's due primarily to the water system work. So, you'll see $50,000 is on the water main side. Blaine isn't performing any water main improvement. So, that's why our costs are higher.
Makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
Kind of guilted them into chipping in for our water supply again now.
Couldn't do it.
They use it, though.
Ouch!
Oh, yeah. But only in emergency.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion is adopted. Item six is to consider Planning Case 20-3, Consider Introduction of an Ordinance Changing Zoning from General Commercial to High Density Residential, 10200 Goldenrod Street. You gonna do a presentation, Mr. Fresnelius?
I can.
Were you planning on it?
I can, if I can court your lectern.
Well, we don't want to put you up to something if you weren't planning on it. It's just an introduction, but...
Mayor, council, I just have a couple of quick remarks and a few slides on this item. So, just to provide a quick summary, the applicant is Shamrock Development. They are proposing a change in zoning for the parcel they own at 10200 Goldenrod Street from general commercial to high-density residential. There is a separate action at a future meeting on June 16 to consider the land use designation and the comp plan from general commercial to commercial mixed use, but we'll discuss that at a separate, at that separate time. This is a location map that shows the parcel, Goldenrod and 102nd. Essentially, this is the site right here. It's adjacent to the post office, which would be to the east, the Progressive Auto Insurance Claim Center, and then there's an office building. The site is about six and a half acres in size. As I mentioned, it is currently zoned a general commercial. It's adjacent to an office zoning district where the post office is located. And then, this is a slide which shows the land use designation under our comp plan. So, this is general commercial with an institutional use to the east. Just real briefly, the site was previously guided, moderate density residential back in 1993. The applicant, who is the Shamrock Development, requested a change in the land use designation and zoning to what exists today at that time. They provided a narrative, which is a part of the packet, and have explained that over the last 30 years, as they have tried to market this property, they've had really limited interest from commercial users. They have had two auto dealers, auto dealerships, neither of those proposals advanced. But more recently, they have been talking to a few multifamily developers. And as the council recalls, I think it was back in February, we had a work session with Shamrock and then the development team of Schaefer Richardson and Amcon. And they've been working on a plan which would go into a more formal stage if this were to proceed on the 16th. In terms of analyzing the request, really the focus for this ordinance, when it ultimately is considered by the council, is whether or not it aligns with our comp plan. And as we've identified in our staff report, there's really two areas in our comp plan. One is in the housing chapter, where we identify a variety of goals related to the expansion of housing options, which a zone change would accomplish by providing additional land for higher-density housing. And then also in our land use chapter, we identify a need for additional housing types to serve various lifecycle needs of our residents. With regard to this ordinance and the zone change, really the council needs to consider four separate criteria. So, one is the effect on public health, safety, order, convenience, and general welfare, the effect on potential or surrounding land uses, conformance with our land use plan, and conformance with any applicable development district standards. This is not in an overlay district, so really that category wouldn't apply. And staff believes that this proposal meets those criteria. Planning Commission did consider this item on May 21. They held a public hearing. There was no testimony that was provided at that time. There was a question from one of the commissioners about future plans for a noise wall along Highway 10, and staff responded that that would be addressed as part of any future site plan review. The commission did recommend introduction of the ordinance tonight, based on the criteria that I previously mentioned. The applicant is here tonight if there are any questions. But as the mayor mentioned, this is an introduction, so formal action would be taken on June 16 along with the comp plan amendment as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Demmer?
So, I guess I'm curious why, well, I'm curious if we can do a little bit more flexible thing like high-density or general commercial. I don't want to do high-density this time, and then it falls through, and then somebody comes and it, you know, it feels to me like nobody really knows what the next five years of development are going to bring. I've heard everything from everyone's going to work at home, to offices are going to get bigger because everyone's going to need 20-foot wide cubicles, and there's going to be need more office space, to no one's going to build any retail anymore, to no one's going to live in an apartment. Nobody knows. And so, I guess I'm curious if we could treat things more flexibly for the next few years, and if that's an approach that is doable and reasonable in situations like this.
Councilmember Demmer, really the decision related to zoning is high-density residential. There is the sort of a separate action related to the comp plan, and it's not discussed, but it will be in a separate report. The designation that we are ultimately recommending is for commercial mixed use, which is sort of a new designation we have in our comp plan. So, that would provide, while the zoning would need to change, I mean, if we changed it to, council changed it to high-density residential, that would be the underlying zoning. If there were a subsequent proposal that weren't high-density, and the council were asked to consider rezoning it again, it would have that flexibility to a, potentially a commercial-type use. We'd have to rezone it, but we wouldn't have to reguide it under the comp plan. So, I think to some extent, what I think you're asking for, we could accomplish by regiding the parcel to provide that flexibility. But really, this action is related to the zoning, and we don't have a separate...
We don't have a way to zone a district, no. Okay. Because I thought we had a different time where we had something that was A or B zoned.
We have more flexibility in some of our districts, like the River Rapids overlay district, Long Pond Rapids Boulevard, but we don't in this particular part of the city.
Bummer.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Having been with planning for 16 years and six years here, so a lot of history, and have seen this parcel a couple of times. And to me, it makes sense. You know, high-density next to the freeway makes sense. High-density next to other commercial uses can make sense. You're not far from, you know, a park for people to play at. You're not far from a major transitway. So, you know, and with planning, you're guessing. You're looking at, what do I think something will happen? And it's not a perfect science. And you do the best that you can, and you look and adjust as things come about. And, you know, this seems to be a good and best use that could be used for that site. And we don't have a lot of, we don't have the flexibility in a zoning designation that says it could be this or that, you know? So, I'm going to support the introduction, obviously, but we'll support it in two weeks.
All right. Any other questions or...
Mr. Mayor.
...before it's introduced? Councilmember Grischoviac?
I just wanted to say a couple of things. One would be that the applicant's here, who owns the parcel, but the developer's not here. And we did hear from the developer in work session. And I just wanted to confirm, or at least clarify, that the developer and the applicant aren't seeking a TIP designation on this piece in the future. There is no TIP district there now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, I was wondering, is that something that would, should be drawn out in a development agreement before we make the decision, or is that something that could be clarified right now for us?
Councilmember Grischoviac, I would say that's, you know, that's a separate issue. We haven't, we haven't had any discussions with the developer about that. And I think, you know, that is certainly something the council could decide at a later date if we ever got a request. I don't know if that's the case. But I think for purposes of, you know, the action related to zoning, it's unrelated to the request for TIP assistance, so...
Okay. Another thing I'd like to say is that the site, I think, is designed well for what is being proposed here. I think that makes a lot of sense. But to councilmember Demmer's concern too, that we have changed zoning in the past with the anticipation of one thing going in, and then something else moves in there that maybe wasn't quite as desirable, but, so, that's, I think, kind of where Council Demmer was coming from.
Councilmember Geisler?
And I think it's just incumbent upon me with the planning background to remind people, we don't do spot zoning. We can't. That's not permitted. So, you can't zone something for a specific use. You know, that said, we're going to be doing zoning, looking forward to the future for the types of potential things that could come. But we can't tie a specific zone change to a specific development that is not allowed.
Right. I wasn't proposing that.
So, just want to make sure that those two things aren't tied together.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, this is my ward, and it's frankly my backyard. And I've given a lot of thought to this. I think the site, it is not ideal in the sense that if a significant apartment development goes in there, I think we're going to have to look really hard at how the traffic flow happens, getting out onto Foley. But beyond that, it's the highest and best use for that piece of property. So, I come at these land use things with kind of a libertarian bent. If somebody has a piece of property and they have a reasonable use that they want to put that piece of property to, I want to find a way where we can get to yes on something like that. So, I intend to support the application for rezoning in this situation. I know some of my constituents are going to be concerned about what that's going to do to traffic, especially rush hour traffic, as they're coming down Foley and trying to get to work and trying to get out onto the street. And we've got to think about how that traffic pattern works there, and what we can do to assist in that regard. So, I'd encourage the city also to look at that kind of street that rings around there, and how we might, you know, go about, whether it's turn lanes, or whether it's other things, how we might go about making it a better traffic flow, especially since it's so close to the intersection that involves Highway 10 and the on-and-off ramps there as well. But I think it's the best use for this piece of land, and I look forward to seeing what Shamrock and the developer can come up with. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fresnelius, anything else? Any other questions, anyone? Okay. Then with that, we will consider, we'll consider this introduced. Mr. Brody, do you want me to read all those, all those details in just...
No. I think today that you've considered it introduced and be sufficient.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
And we don't have to do anything about Mr. Teason's birthday this week or anything. We can just let that go past. Okay.
Back to him.
All right. So, we will consider that introduced, and we will move on to item seven. Consider Appeal Decision of Board of Adjustment and Appeals, Thomas Quinn, 10494 Wintergreen Street. Who wants to...
I have a presentation for the council. Sammy Corlou, I'm the Assistant City Attorney on this. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'll give you a brief summary. This is an appeal of a decision of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, upholding a compliance order that was issued by Chief Building Official Greg Brady. The appeal is in accordance with Section 11-305 subdivision 6 of our city code. You must affirm, amend, or reject the decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals in this case. The appellant is Mr. Thomas Quinn. Mr. Quinn is present and may present any evidence in support of his appeal. Mr. Quinn's residence is located at 10494 Wintergreen Street in Coon Rapids. It's a manufactured home built in 1976 and owned by Mr. Quinn. The appeal relates to a compliance order that was issued by Mr. Brady back in August, or in October of 2019. The hearing in front of the board took place on December 5 of 2019. The board's findings have been included in your packet. So, this all started back in August of 2019, when the city conducted an inspection of the exterior of Mr. Quinn's property and observed that the siding on his residence was decaying. There are numerous holes in the siding and evidence of water intrusion causing the siding to decay and rot. Also, some of the holes were so large, the interior sheathing was exposed to the elements. Mr. Brady also observed that the siding under the windows were rotted, exposing the inner material of the siding boards. The wall cavity and fiberglass insulation was exposed to wind, rain, snow, bugs, birds, and vermin. Holes were also present as evidence of woodpeckers nesting and searching for food. Water appeared on the walls, causing the walls and the paint to fail. Photos of Mr. Quinn's residence, which were accepted by the board as evidence, are also included in your packet. Between August 2019 and November, November of 2019, no repairs had been made on the property, and Mr. Quinn remained living in the residence. The city had been in contact with Mr. Quinn, as well as a company called Manufactured Housing Parts and Service. A man by the name of Greg Votel issued a letter included in your packet with the opinion that Mr. Quinn's residence contained total siding failure, and also noted possible structure failure. He also pinned that the cost to repair the home exceeded the value of the home. In December of 2019, a compliance order was issued by Mr. Brady pursuant to City Code 12-315 subdivision 2, and also cited violations of City Code 12-306 subdivision 1 and 12-306 subdivision 3. Specifically, 12-306 subdivision 1 relates to the foundation, exterior walls, and exterior roof of homes, and requires that they be substantially watertight and in sound condition. The code requires exterior walls to be free of deterioration, holes, looser rotting boards, or any other condition that might admit rain and dampness into the interior portion of the walls. City Code Section 12-306 print 3 regulates windows, exterior doors, and other openings, and also requires they be substantially tight and in sound condition. The code requires the windows prevent the entry of rain, wind, and pests from the building. Mr. Quinn's residence was in violation of these two sections of City Code, and the compliance order was issued directing him to repair the home or demolish it and dispose of its contents. Mr. Quinn appealed that compliance order, and testimony was heard by the board on December 5 of 2019. They heard testimony from city staff, as well as Mr. Quinn, and the board unanimously upheld the compliance order, concluding there were no errors, no erroneous interpretations of City Code. No repairs had been made to Mr. Quinn's residence prior to the board's hearing, nor has any repairs been made up to today's date. He was given an extension to April 30 as pursuant to the board's order. However, that was stayed while this appeal is pending. Again, your role today is to affirm, amend, or reject the decision of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, acting as a court of appeals for this type of case. It's the city's recommendation, based on the information presented here, that the findings of the board be affirmed. I am available for questions, and Mr. Quinn, again, is present to present his appeal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on this before we have the Mr. Quinn come up? Mr. Quinn, would you like to come to the mic and present whatever you'd like to tell us, sir? us, sir?
In January 2019, I applied to Noka County Community Action Program for help in replacing my front door. ACAP had considered doing all of the work at that time on my home, but they wouldn't have been able to do anything until spring. So I only got the front door replaced. My intention was to follow through with ACAP to get the other things done that needed to be done. On July 31st, 2019, I fell at home and broke my hip. I was eventually transported to North Memorial Hospital, where they put a bolt in my hip to repair the damage. Then they discharged me to Camellia Rose Nursing Home. While I was there, I got notified by the search service person that I couldn't, was not allowed to go home because my house had been condemned. I wrote an email to Mr. Demmer, and he seemed it like it was okay. The inspection department is good work. The problem is, is that I was not there at home. I was four miles away in a nursing home when they broke into my house, violating my civil rights. On August 29th, I went to visit with Mr. Brody and Leah Drabczak. It says in this discussion here, it says in August 2019, city staff, including Leah Drabczak, conducted an inspection of the exterior of my residence, but she was inside my house and noticed that I got, sorry, my urinate stuck. And my friend got a copy of what could be found on, on the website, and it's the copy that's attached to here says only that the property is noncompliant. My personal copy, which is included here, for which I presented to the Board of Adjustments, that it was already condemned. I complained to Minnesota Attorney General Keith Allison. The deputy recommended, said that since the legislature made local governments autonomous, that I would have to communicate to the city council and the mayor, which I did, writing a letter to Mr. Koch. And then all of a sudden, the city's tone changed, and now I have appeals available to me, which were not originally available to me. On October 10th, after I was discharged from the nursing home, I had a meeting in the city center with Ali Mott, the representative from ACAP, and she invited Mr. Brody to the meeting, and he gave me a letter, giving me until October 31st to have a plan for repairs of my home. I said that on October 28th, if I was found inside my home, I would be arrested. Sure enough, on October 28th, the police arrived. I showed them that all of the complaints about the interior of my home were based on lies. My roof was not leaking. The, I had three cats at the time, but I couldn't clean up after them from four miles away. And she also mentioned that electrical issues. On March 28th, I had a dryer fire. The fireman removed my dryer, disconnected, it was hardwired to the circuit board. They disconnected the dryer, but I couldn't, didn't know which of the circuits ran the dryer, so they turned all my electric off in the house. I said I would have to get an electrician to come in and restore my power. About five or six o'clock at night, an electrician finally arrived. They disconnected the leads from the circuit board and turned my power back on. He didn't get a permit. In March, the Supreme Court Justice Gilda said that all other courts should shut down. Somehow or other, the city's lawyer got into the court and had my case dismissed. I've lived in that home since December of 1996. In 2013, I had a lot of the siding repaired. In 2017, with the hailstorms, my house did not get any damage whatsoever, because I don't have vinyl siding on it, and my roof isn't, doesn't have tiles. But winter of 2019, I got ice dams, and that caused the, some of the ceiling tiles to be ruined. And this is the basis for Leah Drabczak saying that my roof was leaking. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. This is very difficult. Thank you for coming in and presenting this. Thank you for coming in. I know that this is very difficult, and I am sure that the alternative, I don't know, I don't know what the alternative is here. This is a very tough situation all the way around. Are our speakers on out there?
Yeah, I think that everything that followed from the illegal entry into my home, everything else is based on that, and I think that that means that everything else has been poisoned. And even this hearing here is part of that poison, because it's based on the illegal entry into my home.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Quinn?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskowiek?
I don't have a question for Mr. Quinn himself, but can our legal counsel talk to the entry position that he's taking? Did that occur?
Your Honor, just to kind of add a few things here, Mr. Quinn did sue the city, that's what he's referencing, in December, and that did go up to the district court here in Anoka. He was indicating that there was an illegal entry into his residence. We did go into his residence in September with the permission of the landlord, who we believe had permission of the property owner. And I'm not sure, it sounds like Mr. Quinn did not get that order, because he kept saying, I don't want to have this hearing until I get, you know, we still have this matter in, in court. So we had received this order in, in March, saying that the matter had been dismissed because it wasn't ripe. He hadn't yet exhausted his remedies here with the city. So we sent that order to him last week. We presumed that the court had sent it to him. That's, that was, so that was way back in March. There may have been some confusion there, but clearly the case had been dismissed because it hadn't been ripe, and that was, and so that's why it's here tonight. Theoretically now, Mr. Quinn, if he wanted to, could renew that lawsuit. Certainly, our hope would be that we, we give him some time to come into compliance. If he's able to come into compliance now that it's summer, we'd be willing to do that. We've always been willing to work with Mr. Quinn, and we're up to it. He's never been out of his residence, other than for those medical reasons that he explains. He's been residing there since this matter, other than, like you said, those, those times when he wasn't there for medical reasons. So we haven't arrested him. We've never gone out there to kick him out or anything like that. Obviously, we understand too, it's his residence. But on the other hand, you can see the violations. We had a full hearing in front of the Board of Adjustments, in which we took testimony from city staff, from Greg Brady, the Chief Building Official, I think he's referencing what he said he met with versus myself. I think he meant Greg Brady. And Leah Drabczak presented testimony, as you saw, on behalf of the city. Mr. Quinn was able to present testimony. So we had a full-blown hearing right here, and you know, on these particular matters. And this, again, is just specifically referencing the order dated December 5th, from the Chief Building Official, Greg Brady, for those two particular violations. It's not in reference to anything else. That's what's before the council tonight, and I would be, deny that we illegally searched his, his manufactured home.
Thank you.
That answers your question.
It does. Thank you. I did want to hear that. Thank you.
Mr. Quinn? Mr. Quinn? Is, is there any more remedy with ACAP? Is ACAP willing to work with you at all on making the rest of the repairs?
My park manager put me in touch with one man who I spoke with, on the phone with yesterday, and he said we would come out to look at my property and see what can be fixed, and give me an estimate. One of the problems that I had was that the front door of my house was repaired by a company called Manufactured Housing and Parts and Service. They also did some other work for me when my water line froze up. So I trusted them, and I asked them to give me an estimate of how much it would cost to repair my house. They replied, not to me. They sent the letter to the city.
Yeah, we have the letter in our file. We've, I've seen the file for that letter. But no, no further update from ACAP then?
No, I wrote an email to her to let her know that there, I was coming at this meeting today. Because of COVID-19, legislature never got to capital improvements, and that would have been a part of legislature this year, where ACAP would be able to get funds.
Well, that's an interesting wrench. Councilmember Geisler?
I was just wondering, did we, as a city, ever explore with Mr. Quinn any of our emergency repair loan programs or deferred loan programs? Yeah, you know, any type of assistance programs that we have to, you know, help work towards a solution to make his home to the point where it would meet?
Madam Councilmember, I can speak briefly to that. I don't know the specifics on what programs were discussed, but Ms. Drabczak did testify with the board that she did meet with Mr. Quinn and did explore as many options as she could come up with, but for whatever reasons, none of them were able to work for his situation.
And I can also add that he has had, or the county has reached out with housing alternatives, other than repairing of this particular property, other housing alternatives for him, and it's my understanding that he's not interested in those.
Okay.
Because that's, that was, that's really one of my biggest concerns here, because it feels like if we affirm this, which it seems like it's the right thing to do, the home is in tough shape and it's not worth fixing, we don't, we also work very hard to not make people homeless.
I understand, and obviously, we asked, and I think the court order even asked for us to give him time for him to figure something out. So I would recommend at minimum 30 days, probably ideally more like 60 days, if, if this body's inclined to affirm the order for him to come into compliance.
Yeah, I mean, with summer, I mean, we don't have any issues with pipes freezing or anything, so.
Right. And so, Your Honor, that's the thing that I wanted to say. I see the proposed order here leaves blank for the council's determination is to, you know, if we decide to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Board of Adjustment, Adjustment and Appeals, to determine what the appropriate timeframe is for him to come into compliance. I have two competing feelings on this. One is that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and in his home, he is able to, you know, socially distance himself from other people and, and to avoid unnecessary risks of living together in alternative housing with, with other people. I see the history of problems with the cold, though, and the house. And so, actually, that's the area that I'm most interested in council input on. You know, I'm, I'm open to, I agree with the mayor that I, I think the right decision here is to uphold the decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and to deny the appeal, but I'm open here to a more liberal time period for him to find alternative arrangements or to come into compliance with the compliance order. And I would even be recommending into the fall for that, and then, if need be, to empower the city attorney to exercise discretion after that period as to any extensions of time, or to come back to the council for, for additional action. But I, in my frame of mind, I'm thinking October-ish.
So like 120 days.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts here? Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiek?
I would echo what Councilmember Johnson's talking about in terms of being lenient in the time here that it takes to either become compliant or find other living quarters. I drove out to the property today, and I, you know, it's, it's part of a mobile home development there. I would think, I would think that, given that amount of time, we'd be able to either help you with some solutions in repairing that place, or helping you find other living arrangements. But at this time, with COVID, with all the things that are going on, and being that it is summertime, I think, I think we do have to be lenient in this case. And I would like to personally even just reach out and see if I can help you in any way that I can, after the meeting or, you know, next week. Thank you. Thank you.
Your Honor? Councilmember Wells?
I would agree with that. I am concerned about, you know, leaving him in a potentially unsafe environment. That's not a great option either. And, you know, I think there's some nonprofits in the city that if it was a matter of repair, we could work that out. But it sounds like the place is totaled. There really isn't a repair that needs to be replaced. So I will support the 120 days, but I think we're going to be in the same spot in 120 days. Hopefully, something can be worked out for alternative housing at that point.
Do you remember when they told us the river wind was totaled?
Your Honor, with that, I'd make a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and to put into the final order, if you will, that Mr. Quinn is granted 120 days to come into compliance with the compliance order or any extension granted by the city of Coon Rapids in its sole discretion. And so that does, I think, empower Mr. Brody and Mr. Stemwell to grant further extensions of time if need be.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Johnson and a second by Geisler. Mr. Brody, we have two hands up out in the audience. And I'm not sure what our, we always have the.
I think we've gotten to the, we've gone through the process point. At this point, it doesn't, we're not, it's not a public hearing. It's not anything like that, obviously. As I always tell you, Mayor, as the presider over these matters, you have the ability to conduct the hearing as you see fit. The staff's recommendation would be that, we've already heard from Mr. Quinn, that's what the ordinance requires us to do. If they have concerns about, I think they're here in support of Mr. Quinn, from my understanding that, I don't know what more they would have to add. I don't think they were going to testify or have anything relevant to the actual compliance order.
Okay. Mr. Quinn, are those gentlemen here to speak, are those gentlemen here to speak on your behalf?
No.
No, oh.
Yes.
Yes?
And we certainly can chat with them afterwards if the council is inclined to hear them now or right here in a few seconds, if you prefer.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, Your Honor, if you don't mind, I mean, I would encourage staff to meet with anybody who's got some positive information that they want to share about the appellant's situation or any possible remedy to that situation.
Okay, so we've basically kicked this can down 120 days here. So if you could talk to staff afterwards, if there's something that you need to work out, if there's something that we need a little bit more time, you know, let us know. They'll let us know, and we can figure this out. Nobody up here wants Mr. Quinn to be homeless.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I did the second so we could get into the discussion period. So, Mr. Quinn, want to make sure that we can work with you to get to a solution so you have adequate and safe housing. And so with that, I would encourage our staff to, again, look at our deferred maintenance loan programs, to look at our house loan programs. What are the things that we have available to our city residents? Let's get creative and see how we can help resolve this situation, you know? We don't want people living in homes that are dangerous to them and their health. But, you know, if there's things that we can do to help rectify that, fabulous. And I would encourage staff to do that. As well as, if it gets to the point where we find that it can't be fixed, let's work with, to ensure that we have a good final resolution for Mr. Quinn before the 120 days.
It seems like it would probably make sense to do, we had an old truck. And when we brought it into the service garage, they told us we needed to replace the radiator cap. We need to remove the radiator cap from this one, roll a new truck underneath it, and put it back on again. And it just seems like, with the manufactured housing, when it needs so much, it just seems like that's when you just roll that one out and roll a different one in. But that's just me.
Manufactured Housing was proposing to take my house off the lot, send it back to the manufacturer, and then do all the things there, and then bring it back to me.
Really?
My home, my home is paid off. I've been living there since December 1996, or '95 or '96.
Yeah.
And my expense to live there is lot rent.
Well, we have 120 days now.
It had been suggested to me from different people that I could move into assisted-living apartment or things like that. And I'm sure the rent would be two, three, four times higher than what I'm paying for lot rent.
Yep, I understand. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? And what we are doing is, are we affirming or are we amending then?
It's affirming.
We're affirming with 120-day.
Denying the appeal, affirming the board's decision.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. You take care. We are on item eight, to consider ratification of a city manager's Order 20-1, Temporary Outdoor Customer Service Areas. In furtherance of the federal, state, and local government response to the COVID-19 pandemic, City Manager Order 20-1, you have your own orders, that's cool. Was issued to provide additional and alternative customer service areas on commercial sites in order to limit forward-facing exchanges between customers and employees and to promote physical and social distancing between persons engaged in business activities. Furthermore, Governor Walz's Stay Safe Minnesota Phase 2 allows restaurants and bars to open for outside service only, and the state has requested that municipalities provide flexibility for businesses to accommodate these restrictions. So we're looking to ratify the order and provide city staff continuing authority to carry it out. And then additionally, the staff is requesting the city council to waive the fee associated with obtaining a permit for certain temporary structures when an application is being made related to City Manager Order 20-1. Mr. Stemwell, anything you would like to add to City Manager Order 20-1?
Sure. Mayor and council, yes, as to not let the power go to my head. We thought it was best to have this order ratified by the city council. Really, it's an attempt to provide primarily restaurants and bars after the release of the Stay Safe. Update from the governor of Minnesota was some flexibility around how they can accommodate those current restrictions related to outdoor seating only. There are some other things that would get sort of enveloped into this. So you think about those curbside drop-offs at retail places and things of that nature that may be happening in new ways that we didn't anticipate a few months ago. And so that's primarily the push behind it, the peacetime emergency that we're under. It's really the only time, I think, that the city manager gets to issue an order in this regard, though the council does need to affirm it. So again, that, we're in keeping with the council's desires as far as that goes. Behind this, the staff and community development, the city clerk's office and the city attorney's office developed some policies and some guidance for restaurants that were, as Ms. Lenzmeyer mentioned earlier in this meeting, issued to those restaurants to provide them with that flexibility and further detail out some of the guidance behind the order itself, since the order is fairly simple in its approach. So with that, I'll stand for any questions, as well as we've got staff from all those various departments here if we need to answer anything specific to the policy or the order itself.
All right, excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So, yeah, when the policy for the temporary outdoor dining accommodation policy was sent out, I went, "What? I hadn't seen that. What's this?" You know, and to me, I think that there's a high degree of overlap between this order and the policy. But there are still some stark differences where the policy is more restrictive. And for me, the one that really sticks out is the need to delineate in your parking lot. And Mr. Stemwell and I had had a conversation. And for me, I want to just make sure that while we're putting those barriers and things out, one of the things that our policy says is no snow fencing. And I get that that orange plastic fencing is not very pretty. But then I was kind of looking and going, "What are the other options that are safe? What are those other options that are out there that are not going to cost our business hundreds of dollars to put these barriers up to delineate that outdoor dining area to ensure that, okay, here's where the liquor stops and here's where the parking lot starts?" So for me, I just want to make sure that we look at that policy and are flexible with how we put that into place. And, you know, if, yes, orange snow fencing is not very pretty, but we're not going to be doing this forever.
Comes in green, too.
Oh, wow, that would be prettier. But to me, I just want to make sure that we are working with those businesses and doing what we can to make sure that it's as cost-effective and cheap to be able to do that. And so that was where I wanted to kind of look at the policy because it was pretty hard, heavy-handed on how it said you can't use it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, as regards to temporary fencing, we did approve one just yesterday that is using temporary plastic fence that is not necessarily snow fence. So yes, we are being as creative as we need to be within safety standards.
Yeah, because, you know, to me, it talked about ropes. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, if it's just a rope in the dark, somebody going out, are they going to trip and fall and have issues?" So.
And rest assured, we will continue to make adjustments as we need to because we're trying to work with them to make sure that they can operate.
Sounds great.
All right. Anybody else have any questions about this?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to ratify Order 20, City Manager Order 20-1, and provide the staff continued authority to carry it out, as well as to waive fees associated with the permit required for certain temporary structures when an application is being made related to the City Manager Order.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion?
All right. You know, if we just pass this unanimously, it's going to go right to his head.
All right. I think, sensing we're ready to vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item nine, which is to consider partial liquor license refund due to COVID-19-related closure of restaurants. Staff has been approached by several liquor license holders regarding the potential for a partial refund of their license fees due to the COVID-19 closures. The following spreadsheet that we have here outlines the revenue impact for a refund at 25% and for one at 20%. Anything you want to hit on that, Ms. Lenzmeyer or Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, I'll just mention, obviously, there are two options. The 20% was effectively taking the number of days from mid-March through June 1st. Obviously, restaurants and bars aren't open to full capacity. So there was some question that we just sort of round that to 25% in sort of anticipation of limited alcohol sales moving forward. I also mentioned that several surrounding communities have considered similar refunds, in particular Andover and Anoka, in a similar approach that they're really looking at everything toward the middle of this year. And I know in particular Andover, there is some thought that if their council is interested in, you know, if the closure is maintained for a much longer period of time, that perhaps on the 2021 renewal, they might actually look at it again. And from a budgeting standpoint, that would actually work out very well for us, too, in that if council wants to consider this and there's something down the line that they'd like to consider, that we look at that in 2021 or for the 2021 renewal, I should say. So other than that, that's the magic in the math. There's nothing too sophisticated behind it other than just kind of looking at that quarter of loss for the restaurants and bars and the fact that, you know, the oversight of alcohol sales during that period of time obviously has much diminished. And so we didn't have as much work to do during that period to enforce their liquor license.
Right. They have lots of other fees that continue on.
Yes.
So if we can, and I've really appreciated the city's wanting to do whatever they can to help them. You know, reaching out to them, letting them know, you know, whatever we can do, that's very helpful and appreciated and so.
Councilmember Geisler?
Quick question. So do they pay this on an annual basis or do they pay quarterly payments semi-annual?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, it's an annual payment.
Okay, so would this be a check that we would return to them?
That is what we anticipate doing, yes.
I just wanted to know because if it was a quarterly payment, were we going to just lessen the next payment, just to make sure?
We just need some direction, and we're ready to go with issuing the checks.
Thank you.
I don't know where everybody is. I support the 25% because that's a minimum of the hit they're going to get. I mean, it's.
I think you're going to be unanimous.
25 up, 20 down. Put your finger up if it's 25, down if it's 20.
Okay, are you going to make a motion then, Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, except there isn't one written, so I don't even know what to say. I would, I would make a motion to.
Well, we're just providing directions, so I think you can make a motion to 25%.
25.
Yeah, to consider partial refund at 25% for liquor license fees.
Second.
Okay, motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Do we need that motion restated, Mr. Brody?
I'd ask that you would, and I'd also, you've discussed, the reason we're doing this is to provide some economic assistance and also that the fact that our enforcement over the last couple of months or monitoring of this has been lessened. And that's another rationale why we're giving it. We're not just giving it out of the goodness of our heart, although sometimes that's not a bad idea either.
And we can't just say what he just said?
We can just add that to the record, and I think it was, but just to sort of, that we've reflected that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to refund up to 25%, or 25% on liquor license. That was kind of the motion, right? And it's because we're recognizing that we haven't had to be, we haven't had to do as much oversight. We've saved money on it, and we're recognizing that they have made no money. So their liquor license has done them no good lately. So any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that motion carries. And item 10 is to consider grant awards utilizing lawful gambling proceeds to benefit area nonprofit organizations. Just quickly, the city of Coon Rapids receives 5% of the net profits collected by lawful gambling license holders within the city. Since 2012, 90% of the charitable gambling revenue collected by the city has been distributed to the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation. The foundation primarily uses the city's contribution to help fund the annual Fourth of July community celebration and the fireworks display. At the end of 2019, the cumulative fund balance for the revenue not dispersed to the foundation was $36,321. And these funds are not currently committed for any particular purpose but could be dispersed by the city council for certain purposes as allowed in state statute. The applicable statutes are summarized as follows, we've got them here. But I guess, not to be confused, this is separate funding than what we give to the foundation. And that, the 90% that we give to the foundation is what's used towards the Fourth of July celebration. This money is separate from that. It's the 10% that doesn't go to them.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we clarified that because mentioning that in there, suddenly they're tied together.
Yeah.
And we reached out to Alexandra House, Hope for Youth, Stepping Stone, and the Youth First Community of Promise and asked them to submit information on how their services impact our community and how their needs have changed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we have now heard back. And we have now heard back from all four organizations. And does council have any thoughts or Mr. Stemwell, any guidance on this?
Mayor, Council, I think you hit all the main points. We did hear from all four. Hope for Youth provided some materials that I emailed to council and provided a hard copy of, just some combination of COVID being out of office and some other things that were going on. So their request was a little delayed, but it got to us today, which is the good news. And so, as you mentioned, Mayor, that this balance sits on the city books really for the purpose of being distributed as allowed for by the state statute, which includes to nonprofits who provide services and have an impact in our community. And so that was more or less the questions we asked these four nonprofits. What impacts are you having in our community and how are you being impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic? And that's where those responses came from. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I'd just like to know, have we reached out to the organizations and possibly gave them an invitation to come in and speak about, you know, what they do and their impact on the community?
Councilmember Kicker, Mayor Council, I did not specifically ask that tonight, given we're trying to limit attendees. But certainly, I think, given this opportunity to receive a grant, that if we requested them to come in and speak to their services, I'm sure they'd be happy to do that at a future council meeting.
I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, with four, and we're considering distribution of 34,000. I mean, we could go 10, 10, 7, 7. We could go 85, 85, 85. We could get others. Different ways of doing it, and you're just trying to figure out where the need is and where the services to the city. I mean, Alexandra House is a very large provider of services to the city. And does it make sense to give somebody else, one of the other three that maybe isn't providing as much services to the city, the same amount? I don't know. It's just a question. You know, I'm not naming anybody. I'm just wondering if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskowiac?
First of all, I just want to commend you for coming up with this idea. I didn't realize that we just had this pool of money just sitting on our, in our books year over year, doing nothing. And I can't really think of a better use for this money than to disperse it to these groups right now because they are all definitely impacted by COVID. I do have a question for the city manager regarding these funds. And again, I think this is a great plan, and I thank you for the idea. Have we ever distributed that 10% to, where does it typically go? It's just been sitting there, is my understanding.
Yeah, Mayor Council, it does get used from time to time. More recently, I do recall that Hope for Youth was provided about a $10,000 grant, which matched the amount of their building permit fees when they constructed a facility here in Coon Rapids. That was probably four or five years ago. Since then, I don't think there have been any specific dispersments to organizations. Primarily since then, I think that money has just accumulated over the last four or five years to the balance you're seeing here. So, prior to that, I don't recall. I don't think there's been much activity with those funds because it seems like they get used and slowly build up over time, and then council finds a use for them eventually. That being said, the situation we're in, it really started only just about eight years ago. So, I think that there isn't a long history with that 10%. Really, it's just since 2012, since it started building up or sometime in that timeframe. Maybe those who were here before me could recall that you worked on the agreement.
No, no problem. Give me the note.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so there's board members here from a couple of the groups. And I'm wondering, is there any thoughts as far as what would be a significant contribution to them? I mean, if, for example, a $5,000 contribution to Youth First would be a very significant contribution, given the size of their budget, and maybe, you know, a larger contribution to Alexandra House. I'm just curious if anybody has any feelings on that, you know? Don't want to put you in a spot. Wait a minute, you talked them out of giving us money?
Right, right. And I don't really want to do that, but.
Same here, starting at 4,000.
It's probably apparent what we started at there. It's open. So, I mean, I don't know that I can speak. I know what they do. I know the service they offer, but I don't know that I can speak to the others to know that, you know, I don't have a real good sense for, you know, whether they do more or less than any of the other organizations. I mean, it certainly sounds like Alexandra House does, you know, a tremendous service to the city. And I don't, you know, I don't want to diminish that at all, so.
Your Honor. Councilmember Johnson?
If I could just get from Mr. Brody some of his input on the interfacing with Alexandra House. I think that would be helpful for the council.
Sure. I mean, we have interaction with Alex House probably, or at least our victims do on a daily basis, even in this COVID environment. It's much more electronic now and things of that nature. They sort of handle the, we handle the, with our victim witness person, the sort of day-to-day, here's what's happening in court, here's your Danko, where Alex House handles the, if they want to get in order for protection, housing issues, all those kinds of things that they have. So, we do have, you know, almost daily, they interact, you know, our police department, things of that nature. And we do assessments right out on the street. We call Alex House right from the street with our victims. So, there is that sort of, as I keep repeating myself, that daily interaction. We do also give money, though, every year to Alex House, and we do recognize that. And that's, I think, is further recognition of how valuable we find them. And I know they've had fundraising issues. They had their big gala that was during the middle of this. And I'm guessing they didn't raise nearly the kind of money that they were hoping to do so. So, I would encourage anything that we can give to Alex House would be money that would be well spent and come right back to people right here in Coon Rapids.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I mean, would it make sense then to maybe give Alexandra House a little more and give every other one just a little less? I mean, maybe take whatever, if it's, we were saying 8,500, maybe drop each one of those down to seven and then, and the 1,500, so that'd be an extra 4,500 onto Alex, Alexandra House?
If you make that motion, I'll second it.
So, that's really funny because the notes I just wrote was 15 Alex House, seven Hope for Youth, seven Stepping Stone, six Youth First. That's just, but where were you going with it?
I was going 1,500 in all of them, so it'd be 7, 7, 7.
Okay.
And then, and it'd be 4,500 extra, so that would be, what, 13 to Alex, Alexandra House?
I was kind of going 15, 6, 6, 6, but. You know, but I agree that we need to be a little heavier on the Alexandra House. And I think, you know, like when we helped Hope for Youth, that this is what those funds are for. And it's not like there's a daily amount of money that we can say and do something on a regular basis. You got to let it build up. And here is a special need, a special time, a special instance, and that's what this is for. I think it's absolutely the right thing. So, were you guys saying?
13, 7, 7, 7.
13, 7, 7, 7?
Is that a motion?
So, I'll make a motion that we consider granting an award for the nonprofit organizations that directly benefit our community with $13,000 allocated to Alexandra House and $7,000 each to Stepping Stone, Youth First, and Hope for Youth in recognition of their service to our community and our support to them during the pandemic where they have not had the amount of funding and support to be able to maintain their services.
I'll second that.
That was a motion by Geisler and a second by Kicker. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
You know, as you read through these applications, you know, there's definitely a lot of need in these groups. You know, just as an example, in the first one, you know, Stepping Stone talks about, you know, purchasing 25% of their food in the past and 75% being donated, and now they're purchasing 100%. So, what I guess I would just ask, we're using the money that came from people doing legal gambling, like pull tabs, to pay for this. If you're at home and you have been able to stay employed through this, please consider, you know, maybe a little extra donation this year to some of these organizations.
Very good. That's right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. We are up to number 11 to discuss the Anoka County Board Resolution related to reopening businesses and churches. And this was passed on May 26th at the county. And really, all it is is just a message of support for our businesses. It's just a message to say we need to get out of their way a little bit. If everybody else can figure out how to operate, they can figure it out, too. So, we've got two different things here, and actually, the one that was included with this was the, a copy of the Anoka County Resolution itself. And then after getting two more letters from our businesses this morning, and I thought maybe it would be cleaner to just change it from Anoka County to Coon Rapids and then strike the, they had one paragraph in here about the sheriff's office. And so, we have a little bit different situation here, so we just struck that whereas. And then there was a whereas in here that they included that said. I'm sorry, which one?
Bottom one. Oh, you don't have the paper copy.
Oh, sorry. I'm reading it online. At any rate, it talked about the CDC phasing. And I don't know if we have the same thing there as Anoka County or. So, basically, I just struck that. Here we go. Minnesota and Coon Rapids have followed the CDC guidelines under federal regional, under federal regional gating requirements. And we have met the three phases that were recommended and, I don't know if we have or not, 64 pages.
No.
So, I just struck that. So, then, and that whereas would be just simply whereas if businesses, churches, and local nonprofits in Coon Rapids follow safety requirements on social distancing and follow state, local, and CDC guidelines, the Coon Rapids City Council supports these places of work and worship while they operate. I can read the whole thing. If there's questions, if there's anything else bothersome in there. But I think that we've kind of got it down to where it's just, it's just a letter of support. I met with five of our, five, no, five different groups last week, three of which have bars in town, restaurants, and the executive director of the Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association. And they're very thankful for the 90 or so communities that have done letters like this encouraging things to move along. You know, so, and that's all this is, just a letter encouraging things to move along.
So, Mr. Mayor, do you realize that this is? So, there's a number of things that are problematic. Number one, it doesn't really do anything, doesn't change anything. The Anoka County one was done prior to the orders which granted more flexibility in opening of our bars and restaurants. But there's contradictions in here as well. So, it talks about, you know, being able to basically go back because the last whereas is that we encourage the governor to recall the order and subsequent and future orders that look at the closing. But the whole start of the, the wherethes talk about how we're going to follow, we're going to social distance and do follow all the rules. But the last thing it says, we want to kick out all the rules. And to me, that doesn't quite make sense. And so I thought I would do a couple little things. This is the count of cases in Coon Rapids. We aren't going down.
That's a cumulative count.
That is a cumulative count. Okay. So, let's look at the percentage of cases in the county. So, we started out really high because we are closer to the cities, and we are starting to maintain. But that orange line is the percentage of our population. Our percentage of COVID in our city is statistically higher than the percentage of our population. So, I'm concerned by saying, let's put in a whereas that says, get rid of all of the orders that are working to save and keep our citizens safe and to encourage being healthy. You know, it's wearing masks, respecting other spaces. That I feel very uncomfortable telling the governor and all of the health officials that they don't know what they're talking about. I totally support doing everything that we can to help our businesses. We need to be doing as much as we can, but I'm not going to do it at the expense of the health of our residents. So, I'm not going to support this.
Okay, it's reasonable. So, the last thing in here is, it says that allowing the opening of establishments who will follow requirements on social distancing, safety, and follow state, local, and CDC guidance. So, we're not really setting them up for the Wild West. We're encouraging them to open them up.
But here on the dais, we're not even following the guidance.
And they had set it up for, all right, so which one do you want to talk about?
You know, if you wanted to look at gating requirements, the first gate is a downward trajectory or near-zero incidence of documented cases over a 14-day period. That's the first gate. We're looking at saying, we want to be at gate three. We're not there yet.
Okay. So, the one, two, three, four, fifth, the sixth whereas, I've got that first line struck off, which is the Minnesota and Coon Rapids have followed all that, including the three phases and the gating requirements. I just struck that off from there.
Yep.
So.
You know, and to me, if we were even going to consider it, if we look at that first whereas, where it talks about the second to the last, or I guess the last sentence, this order required Minnesota to take part in proactive measures to slow the spread of this pandemic. The order is also there to protect and value human life, to reduce the strain on our healthcare system, and to allow for our hospitals and first responders to better prepare. So, when we look at saying, we want him to get rid of those orders, that's what we're saying we want to go away. I feel very uncomfortable with that.
So noted. Okay. So, since I brought this forward, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 20-52 striking the first, the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth beginning sentence of the whereas. Minnesota and Coon Rapids have followed the CDC guidelines under federal regional gating requirements, and we have met the three phases we're recommended in. So, that would strike that off, and it would just be whereas if businesses, churches, and local nonprofits in Coon Rapids follow safety requirements on social distancing and follow state, local, and CDC guidelines, the Coon Rapids City Council supports these places of work and worship while they operate.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, you're thinking of leaving in the part where you're asking the governor to recall his March 27, 2020 order?
So, I'm just trying to figure out what we can do to help our bars and restaurants.
Right. So, if I may, I mean, this was put on the agenda as a discussion item about whether or not we would support, in principle, the county position. And you and I have had a phone conversation about this, and I do, I do support, in principle, the county position for a lot of different reasons. But, so, when I get off of work today, I get a new resolution that then I have very little time to review. While I've reviewed the county one, I have particular issues with it, but I'll support the principle and the message that you say you want to put forward. But some of this seems very, very political to me, and I've expressed that before. I think it's utterly gratuitous that we say, we declare that we support. I think it's utterly gratuitous that we say, we declare that we support and will uphold and defend all constitutional rights of our citizens and the rights of the citizens of Coon Rapids. We all swore that oath. The governor swore that oath. It seems gratuitous to put it in here unless we're trying to make this a political statement. And then we have, at the end, saying to the governor, who candidly, I think we all believe, because we declared a state of emergency and haven't been meeting in person up until today, we're saying to him, basically, recall the March 27, 2020 order that you issued because you were wrong. I mean, that's the implication of it. So, and so that just doesn't seem to me to be the right message to be sending. Now, my frustration with this whole situation is that we have businesses that can safely reopen. I believe that to be the case. I have talked to many of them who are getting consultations with physicians and health professionals and who have created flyers for their clients and customers and have reached out to the state of Minnesota. And basically, the state of Minnesota has responded to them by arbitrarily saying, we don't know what to say back to you about reopening, or you tell us what you want to do, and then they do, and then they get told basically, ah, it's not good enough, or we'll have to wait and see. And since it's the state of Minnesota that shut down these businesses, I think it's incumbent on the state of Minnesota to engage far more proactively than it has been with people to say, here are the conditions under which you can reopen, and I'm not seeing that being done. So I can get behind a message that this council sends to the state of Minnesota to say, you got to work with the businesses in this community to reopen, and you got to engage with them and not just sit back and arbitrarily say, that's not good enough, or what you're telling me isn't good enough. I told one of my constituents, and I know you've talked to him, Mayor, Mark Mortensen, who owns Trax Jiu-Jitsu, who just put a significant amount of money into remodeling a business in the Foley-Northdale area about this issue, and we were hoping that the revision to the stay-at-home order was going to encapsulate or capture some of the gyms and fitness clubs and businesses like his jiu-jitsu business to give them a path to reopening. It did not. It did not even give him the opportunity really to fairly approach them on it. So I do want to send a message to the state, but just kind of retooling the county's message for our purpose and giving us a couple of hours before the meeting to think about it and to weigh in on it, that's a tough pill to swallow.
Yeah.
And, you know, the reality of the situation is here, there's a lot of loaded language in it. It says, whereas this order has caused undue hardship and financial loss to many businesses. It's caused hardship, sure. It's caused financial loss, sure. But now we're saying it's undue, well, at the same time, we've been meeting remotely, we've had city hall shut down. I'm not so sure it was undue when the purpose was to save lives. And at the same time, we're looking at this and looking at the county's resolution, the county board issues a curfew for completely different reasons and shuts down Anoka County, including the interstates and the state highways for, you know, the last weekend, in the evenings. One is to protect property from vandalism, and the other one that the governor issued is to protect people's lives from probably the worst pandemic this world has seen in 20 years. So I don't think it's undue. I think it was legitimate. Now, the question is, when you have these kinds of restrictions, are they narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling state interest? That is the constitutional test for stuff like this. And I think, from my own, this is my opinion, we are getting much more attenuated from the original purpose of the stay-at-home order. That was a broad order in the beginning. There were some exceptions. It wasn't narrowly tailored, but we were in a new zone. Now there's been some more exceptions to the stay-at-home order, and they're expanding it, but frankly, they are not narrowly tailoring it anymore. There are things that they can do to tailor it much better to allow many, many more businesses to reopen, especially when those businesses are trying to engage with them. Why can't we just send a letter? Why can't we just send a letter saying, we generally support the principles that are underlined in the county's resolution, and we encourage the governor and all the various departments of the state of Minnesota to work proactively with our local businesses and get them back to work and get them back running under safe conditions? I don't understand why it requires us basically retooling the county's resolution.
Mr. Mayor. So, hang on. So just to be clear, all I did was, was, all that's happened is, what the county resolution was, has been changed to the Coon Rapids resolution. All of the other language is exactly the same. If we go back to the county resolution and resolution and ratify that, it's fine as well, it's just symbolic in nature, know that we sent a letter. It's not a nickel's worth of difference from sending this, it's just a matter of showing our businesses that we've got our back, got their back, and we support them. Councilmember Kreskowak?
Well, to one of the last points that Councilmember Johnson just made, retooling this, I mean, could it be something as simple as saying that we consider all businesses in Coon Rapids essential? And if they are all treated fairly, like if Menards is essential, why isn't this store essential? If Menards can handle it in a safe social distancing manner and requiring their guests to wear a mask if they feel that's safe, and if residents feel comfortable enough to go out there and are healthy enough, you know, couldn't we consider, you know, all businesses essential to follow that same type of guideline? Could something like that be drafted into a whereas?
I was just, yeah, I was just starting with what the county had done.
Right.
And again, it's just basically symbolic.
Yeah.
So.
And, Mr. Mayor?
And you oppose this, Councilmember Geisler, but I understand.
I oppose the language and the format and the structure. I don't disagree with the concept, you know. I, you know, am closer to what Councilmember Johnson talked about. We need to be finding ways to help our businesses, absolutely. We need to find ways to help our nonprofits. We've done some of that tonight. We're working with, you know, how can we help our local businesses as well with, you know, trying to find ways, we're not going to do tent permit fees, and we're going to try and make sure that, how can we work within the constraints in a way to do this safely? Absolutely, I support that, and I think we need to do that. And I, you know, if it's a simple message to the governor is to say, we need to either have, you know, more data, more rationale that says why things can't open faster, or, and to help make sure that we explain that to everyone. And then it's to encourage them to be more precise, to be, instead of that broad brush, how can we find ways as a state to allow local entities to have a little bit more flexibility, and how can we help our businesses at the same time that we protect our residents? I'm all for that. What I'm not for is a blanket stick in the eye that says, your order, you know, should be rescinded. And that is, in my opinion, the symbolic nature of this, and I think it is a bad look for the city of Coon Rapids. It's not in there in a show of partnership, it's not there in a show of how can we all work together to ensure the livelihood of our residents and our businesses and the safety at the same time. It's not an either/or, it's both, and that's what this doesn't do. But if we can find a way to encourage more flexibility and finding, you know, ways to do things, I would support that kind of a resolution. But something, again, thrown at us two, three hours before the meeting is not the right way to do it.
Okay, so we can go back to the Anoka County resolution that came out Friday, if you'd like to discuss that. I came out a month ago with this, and it melted down the same way. There wasn't any action, there wasn't any letter, there wasn't any suggestion of any other language, so I grabbed what the county approved, and then all I did was just modify it to Coon Rapids. And if we're not happy with that, I can go to Anoka County, we can go back to ratifying that, or we can just go with this one on an up and down vote, and if we're done, we're done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Johnson.
So I think you're taking away from this maybe perhaps a little bit some of the wrong message, and I would just note that when we talked about some form of resolution at a workshop some weeks ago, it was not a county resolution, it was the now then and Lakefield resolutions that frankly had far more problematic language in them and findings in them that were maybe suited for those small communities, but not certainly suited for Coon Rapids. You know, had we had time to talk about the drafting of this, I could tell you that I could get behind the draft resolution that was put together if some things were added and some things were omitted, and not even lots of things. I mean, I could, fine, if we want to have a gratuitous statement in here that we will uphold people's constitutional rights, which is our sworn oath and obligation, that's fine, I can live with that. In the now therefore be it resolved clause, if we want to say, by the city of Coon Rapids, Minnesota, that we hereby encourage Governor Tim Walz to allow the reopening of establishments who will follow requirements on social distancing, safety, and follow state, local, and CDC guidance, I can get behind that.
Yeah, let's do that.
I can get behind that. If we want to, you know, I'm not going to quarrel about the whole notion of undue hardship, that's a matter of opinion, I've stated mine on the record here, but I'm not going to quarrel about that being in the actual resolution. I do think we should acknowledge in the second whereas clause that goes on to say that Coon Rapids has followed these executive orders and recommendations of the stay-at-home order, and then it gives the litany of those orders to say that, and we declared our own state of emergency. And there is an interesting thing that one of my constituents, who is a business owner and I discussed. I asked, I asked him, if you were to do one of these things so that you're not, you're not sending the wrong message to the community, that there's still a risk and a danger out there, and you're not trying to, you know, be political about it. What would you include in there? And his response was, I think you got to acknowledge that there's still a risk.
Of course.
I think you have to say that there's still a risk, and there is a bit of that at the end, okay? So, I mean, I don't want to say that this is drafted without that notion in mind, but, you know, I would love to have in here a whereas clause that said something like, and I'm doing this off the cuff because we didn't have much time, but.
Well, the bottom one says, though, Mr. Johnson, that.
Go ahead.
If businesses, whereas, if businesses, churches, and local nonprofits in Coon Rapids follow safety requirements on social distancing and follow state, local, and CDC guidelines, the Coon Rapids City Council supports these places of work and worship while they operate. I mean, it's mentioned in here a few times.
Right, and, I mean, because that's the end of the first page, that whereas, that the gating is taken out of. And if we do that, if we change that now therefore resolved to what Councilmember Johnson talked about versus encouraging the recall of the March 27 order.
So now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Coon Rapids to.
Just go down.
We hereby encourage Governor Tim Walz to.
Allow.
Allow the reopening of bars, restaurants, churches, and other places of public accommodations, allowing the opening of establishments who will follow requirements on social distancing, safety, and follow state, local, and CDC guidance.
I can support that.
I can get behind that.
I can support that.
And I think it's important.
That's an easy one.
To do this because I frankly don't think the message is as strong if it's a divided council. I would like to see us all be in a position where we can support this.
Agreed.
And so.
Yeah, can I ask a couple other quick things?
Councilmember Geisler?
In the second whereas, where it says, whereas Coon Rapids has followed these executive orders and recommendations, I would love to see that say, whereas Coon Rapids has encouraged residents to follow these executive orders, because the city doesn't follow the orders, it's the people. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we still do when we're called out to places, it's still at us, local enforcement.
Right, but I think we need to encourage and support that we think people should be following these guidelines.
To say Coon Rapids and its citizens have.
Yep. And then the other thing I had talked about earlier that I would like to see in that first whereas, where the final sentence said, this order required Minnesota to take additional proactive measures to slow the spread of the pandemic, I think we need to acknowledge a little bit more of why, you know, and it's to reduce the strain on the healthcare system, to protect and value human life, and allow our hospitals and first responders time to prepare. That's what was, why it was there.
Yeah.
And so if there's anything that we can add in there that talks about that human life and why, I would love to see that added.
I think that makes sense, but I think that that actually is the measures that slow the spread, all of what you just stated.
I mean, that's what they've been drilling into us from the beginning is.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Slowing the spread, ramping up hospital.
A small number of words that would say that, it would be, and prepare for adequate treatment, or something like that, that'd be a simple.
Yeah.
Sure, all right.
Your Honor, if I just want to see the temperature on adding one more thing, because one of the things that I'd like to add that I haven't, so what I get really concerned about is when we tell businesses they have to close, and then it's an unfunded mandate. And I don't know how people at the table feel about adding something about, you know, I tried to write down bullets as people were talking, but something about helping make the affected businesses financially whole, that, and maybe that's the wrong phrase because they're not going to pay them for every single day they missed, but.
Yeah.
I can get concerned about the situation where, when a business is closed, they get, you know, the, that there's a program for them, but when a business is open at 25%, that there isn't a program for that. That's the one I'm most concerned about.
It's actually a really important point, and if I might just dovetail on it.
If someone has better language, by the way.
Well, I don't know that, I do, but I do want to throw it out for just a brief discussion because, you know, when you have a stay-at-home order, the government is saying, because of health, safety, and welfare of the community, we have to do this. We have to do a shutdown. And then it's incumbent on the government to work with those communities and those citizens to try and, and find ways to work out this, what is a clear impingement on their rights to be open and to have a livelihood. And in a situation where that goes on, the longer and longer it goes on, the longer and, or the closer and closer it starts looking like a taking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I don't think that is the intent behind any of this, okay? But it can have that effect, even though it's not the intent. And so if we could find a spot in here to put in, whereas, we encourage, you know, the governor and the state, and the legislature even, to seek out opportunities to financially support local businesses if they're, you know, if they cannot obtain relief from the stay-at-home order.
So Councilmember Johnson, that could be in that one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, this continued order has affected their base of employees, many of them cannot withstand the loss of wages, will be seeking unemployment, this will cause undue hardship and financial impact to owners and operators as businesses, churches, and local nonprofits try to hire and train new staff, and we encourage the state to find a way to make them whole, or we find, we encourage the state to.
Seek opportunities.
Or.
You said it, and I lied.
Can we somehow get Unicorns and Santa Claus in this?
Maybe.
And Glitter and Sparkle.
It's a. It's, uh, the other one I had heard was encourage the state to help the businesses.
Yeah, I don't think we can state anything about making whole, but to me it's almost a where, either an add to the whereas that you're talking about, Mr. Mayor, or a new whereas. Whereas we encourage the state, the local, county, state, and federal governments to administer or initiate programs to support businesses that have suffered the loss, losses, you know? We can't make them whole, but.
No, but, but we could seek opportunities, the, the state could seek opportunities to help them financially or something.
Yeah.
You know, we're not trying to write the law. We're not trying to write the ordinance. We're just trying to write a symbolic thing to say we're supporting our businesses that you can.
We want you to help them.
Yeah. So, Mr. Stemmwell. You want to just do a manager's order on this?
Yeah, you know what? Let's just call it that. I might recommend you put that under the be it further resolved under the bullet points because it's a proactive statement that you're asking this. The governor and the legislature to consider financial assistance programs to help businesses with the financial hardships of COVID-19.
Okay, perfect.
Something along those lines.
Is that a encourage?
Like you've got experience writing these.
Encourage or recommend or?
Yep. So, yeah, so, so it's to encourage the state to find a way to seek opportunities.
Yeah, to consider financial assistance programs that would help offset.
That.
Losses due to the COVID-19.
That. Okay, good.
Well, we'll read back the video later so I remember what I said.
Yeah, you said it very well. I like that financial assistance.
Okay. So, are we good?
Probably.
Okay.
Do we have a way to know what we just have?
Point of procedure.
Mr. Brody.
I think the mayor made a, made a motion. It never was seconded and frankly, given all the changes that have been made.
Boy, I figured we have to start over.
I said, all right, we're on the same page there then.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, it was.
If somebody has a good grasp, I think we have a general understanding of it. But if somebody has the best grasp, but if they want to try to make an attempt at the motion to reflect some of the changes and then we'll sort of review the tape. Maybe the, maybe Matt has it in the best form.
I mean, I, I will try it.
I have.
Because I, you know, and I think you, then you can correct me if I missed anything. How's that?
Okay. It's because I wrote a note.
Yeah.
Unless you want to make your motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is something that is near and dear to your heart.
Yeah, so.
Uh huh.
Well, so, all right.
Go for it.
Okay, all right, all right. So I would make a motion that we pass resolution number 20-52. And it's a resolution to advise and encourage and support for reopening of businesses and churches who will follow requirements on social distancing, safety, and follow state, local, and CDC guidance. It's as it was presented, the Coon Rapids version, except on the end of the first whereas, it'll be to slow, to slow the spread of this pandemic and prepare for adequate treatment. Oh, I'm sorry. And, yeah, and prepare for adequate treatment. And then whereas Coon Rapids and its citizens have followed these executive orders in the second whereas, and that ends with, and has issued their own emergency order. So Coon Rapids has issued their own emergency order. And then down on the one, down at the last whereas on the first page, the Minnesota and Coon Rapids have followed the CDC guidelines. Those are all struck. And it's that, that paragraph is actually whereas if businesses, churches, and local nonprofits in Coon Rapids follow safety requirements on social distancing and follow state, local, and CDC guidelines, the Coon Rapids City Council supports these places of work and worship while they operate. And then now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Coon Rapids, Minnesota, that we hereby encourage Governor Tim Walz to allow the reopening of bars, restaurants, churches, and other places of public accommodations, allowing the opening of the establishments who will follow requirements on social distancing, safety, and follow state, local, and CDC guidance. And then that line down underneath there, be it further resolved, that we seek, we encourage the state to find a way to seek whatever you're said.
I will second that.
Okay. Awesome. Motion by me, Mayor, second by Councilmember Geisler. Discussion?
If I could third it, I would.
Could we play back the discussion?
No.
Oh, God, no.
Could the court reporter read it back?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion in the second. Any, for any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I apologize for how short I was at the beginning. I really didn't know that we would see a way through this. And I thank you so much for everybody's participation.
Yeah, and I would encourage that too, you know, and I think we're all passionate about doing the right thing. And we just come at it from different perspectives. And that's not right or wrong. It's just, you know, a little different. And we all have the same end goal in mind, to help our businesses, to help our citizens, to do the right things. And I think, you know, it's a little ugly sometimes with the, the making of the sausage, but we get there. And we can come together and get to a point where we've got something that we can all stand behind. And I think that's important.
Your Honor, if I read this very briefly.
Oh, very briefly. Okay.
So I, I want to thank everybody too for listening and considering the various different perspectives on this. I mean, the one thing I don't want people to take away from this though, and you can see some of us are wearing masks up here and some of us are not. I can just speak for myself. I'm in court regularly. I'm interfacing with the public regularly and I wear my mask because I'm expected to do so in all government buildings and I'm expected to do so when I'm in court. And I'm interfacing with people who are frankly in difficult times of their lives and oftentimes don't have very adequate healthcare. And so their risk factors and, and because of that, I end up being kind of a vector potentially for that. So I don't want anybody to take away from our encouragement to the state that the risk is gone. It's not. Okay? But what we're doing is we're expressing in a, a strong viewpoint that our citizens in our community are capable of looking out for each other. And that's what, that's what Coon Rapids is frankly known for. And, and we'll see how it goes. But I'm optimistic that, that the citizens and the businesses in this community are going to continue to face this challenge and meet it in a positive way where we're going to look after one another. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. And, and I guess for, for me, it was a matter of just trying to address, address some of the inconsistencies. And when I met with the restaurant owners last week, they said, you can go to the store. You can pick something up, put it back, pick something up, put it back, pick something up, put it back. When you come into our restaurants, we have control over that environment. We've, you know, we're, we're expecting that we'll be at 50% occupancy. And everything there will be disinfected as soon as those people leave. And they said, so we just want consistency and we want an opportunity to make a living. So. But yeah, no, it's certainly not gone. Everybody certainly has their, has to take their precautions. We are up to open mic.
We had a comment from Brody.
Mr. Brody? Did we miss something?
Because I think we're going to get calls tomorrow. And I think everybody does understand. I think we've done a pretty good job that this is a symbolic gesture that we've passing, that we're encouraging the governor to take these things into account. But we can't allow, you know, businesses can't change their model on this. I know we'll get calls tomorrow. I've seen it on my own personal Facebook feed and other communities where business owners are saying, yes, if the council passes this, I can reopen. And I think we've gotten that message clear, but I can almost.
Absolutely not.
Be positive that tomorrow we may get a call or two. And so I just wanted to emphasize that little piece. And I think, like I said, I think you guys made a symbolic gesture today of encouraging that. And that's what we all want to do. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, especially the ones that are licensed by the state. All right. So we are at open mic right now. Is there anybody here to address counsel for open mic? All right. Well, we'll move past open.
Mayor, counsel, if I, if we may just pause for one second.
Yes.
We do have someone on the Zoom meeting, Mr. John Holland, who it looks like has now raised his hand, I believe, to speak at open mic. So it looks like he has joined the Zoom meeting and I believe will be piped into the sound here in the chambers.
If our technology doesn't let us down.
Wow.
I'm betting on feedback.
You're betting on feedback.
You might get the record read back to you.
Um, this is John Holland. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Holland.
Great. Again, John Holland. I live at 10551 Quinn Street. I, I have a sort of a complaint, but I'll turn it into a request instead. I'd like the city to relook the maintenance along the public property, of the public property along some of the streets in town, particularly Coon Rapids Boulevard, which named for our city and is sort of the main drag through town. And I think the weeds along the side are totally out of control. And they have been every year for the last probably 10 years that I've started noticing things like that. In some areas, the weeds are two or maybe even three feet tall. Horrible gnarly weeds I, I can't imagine having in, in a private yard. And what I'm surprised about is that when you look at a city park like the one here by my house, near the water plant, the name escaped from me for a second.
River View Park.
River View Park. Right. It, it's absolutely beautiful. There isn't, there's almost not a single dandelion anywhere in that entire park, especially next to the water plant, that beautiful sloping hill. It's absolutely pristine grass, but we don't seem capable of doing that along major thoroughfares. And I don't know why. I suspect part of the problem is even though it's named Coon Rapids Boulevard, I think it's also County Road One. And maybe the county is responsible for that. But if we can't pressure them to do a better job of maintaining it or reach some city-county agreement to do it for them, some, something needs to be done because it just looks, it's a slight on the city and it looks horrible. So those are my, that's my comment or complaint and request that if nothing else, if someone can tell me why it's not able to be not only kept mowed shorter, but also treated at least once or twice a season for weeds in the spring and keep some of that horrible stuff down. And I'm particularly talking about, I, I live on Quinn Street and of course, north from me towards Rose Garden and, and the rest of the area. Well, actually in both directions, we have that new beautiful trail or, or redone trail. But the grass on both sides of that trail, at least on the south side of Coon Rapids Boulevard, is in such horrible condition, it just really detracts from the city. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Holland.
Kate, can I ask you a question, please? Is Mr. Holland still with us?
Yes.
Mr. Holland, would you include in that Foley Boulevard too?
I happily would. I.
Thank you, sir.
I was going to measure round, mention Round Lake Boulevard over there too.
I, I guess if, if I give me just one more minute, whoever's in charge of the parks, get their advice on how to keep the weeds down along non-park property. That guy ought to be promoted because whoever it is, he does an awesome job in the parks.
Well, it's, it's the same guy in charge, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Holland.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else for open mic this evening?
It was like the best comment we've had in a long time.
Here, counsel, there is nobody else on the Zoom meeting.
All right. Then we will close out the open mic portion of the meeting. And we don't have any reports on previous open mics and we are on to other business. Councilmember Decker.
Two things. One is as the school year, the, one of the weirdest school years in the history of school years winds up. First off, congratulations to the, the graduates and, you know, look, we, we actually did ask you to sacrifice quite a lot. And it might not seem like it to those of us who think that, you know, the last year of high school was a lot of fun. But when you go back and think about what your last year of high school was and how much you remember it, oh, 25 years or more later. Asking you to, to give up a lot of that was a sacrifice. And, and, you know, hopefully you're, you're all stronger for it and, and we appreciate that. Doesn't always get mentioned along with the sacrifices of the, the businesses and the other groups. So I just thought I'd call that out. With school ending and not a lot of summer programs available, just everyone be careful. There's going to be a lot more kids out and about. So I know not as many people are driving, but that can mean that it's even more likely that something bad happens. The other thing I wanted to mention, it's, it's similar to a comment I've made after another meeting. But I just want to thank everybody on the council. And on Friday, there was a Supreme Court decision around coronavirus stay at home order. And it was the, the California one. And Chief Justice Roberts said something. The precise question of when restrictions on particular social activities should be lifted during the pandemic is a dynamic, in fact, intensive matter subject to reasonable disagreement. And while he was talking specifically about one instance of coronavirus, the, the act of, of politics and in general is a, is a dynamic, in fact, intensive matter subject to reasonable disagreement. And, you know, what I, what I really like to thank everybody for is, once again, what, what should be commonplace everywhere, that we can come in disagreeing and, and the next meeting, we're, we're joking around and, and having a good time again. And I, I just really appreciate that because I don't, I don't know that that is the way it is. And I, I trust everyone here is coming from a point of good intentions and that we might have different inputs and we might have different assumptions, but nobody's doing it in bad faith. So, so thank you again for all that. And I, I wish every elected official had that kind of situation. And, and for everybody else, you know, I'm sure people at home are going to disagree with something somebody up here said. But, but that's, that's part of the game. And acknowledge for, for everybody here, this is a really stressful time to be an elected official. And I'm not asking for, you know, any sort of pity. It, it's just very different. It's not. When we were knocking on doors, this, these weren't the questions people were asking us. So. So anyway, thank you to everybody on the council and, and thank you to everybody at home who understands that they have something that not everybody has, I hope.
So on, on the graduation, not to minimize what you just said, that was wonderful. Thank you for saying that. The, the Coon Rapids High School is just wrapping up, I believe, two days of drive-by graduation. And they just had an awesome display of all the seniors portraits down North Hill Boulevard, both sides. That was really cool to just take a slow pass each way and look at all those young faces ready to hit the world that have, that really just had their years shortened and, yeah. I mean, my, 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 one of, one of my sons is, was probably the best illustration for me. He walked out of the front room, having been sent home from college. He walked out of the front room and goes, well, that's it. I'm done. Four years. That was it. I'm done. So, yeah, it's just a very interesting time and, yeah.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
So I, I do want to speak briefly to one issue. And we've been focused so much on, and rightfully so, on things like the pandemic and, and the request for action by the city council, by our businesses and citizens and things like that. There's been another thing that's happened in, in our community in the last week or so. And, and has a lot of people coming from many different perspectives on it. I, I've been reflecting on it a lot as a prosecutor because it was back in 2006 and 2007. I, I ghostwrote for my father an article for Criminal Justice Magazine called "Racial Bias in the Criminal Justice System and Why We Should Care." And it just struck me so hard this last week as things evolved around the Twin Cities and then nationally, that it is an enormous challenge that we all face to deal with some of these issues that are embedded in our systems that really don't. of these issues that are embedded in our systems that really don't give a fair opportunity to some people, especially people of color, to have their voices heard and to be treated similarly to other citizens. And it's been a problem for a long time. The reason I bring it up here is because I've been watching, both from the perspective of being somebody who works in a more metropolitan setting and also watching the response in our own home county here in Anoka County. And I just have to say that I just feel blessed that we have the police department that we have, that we have the sheriff that we have, that we have surrounding police chiefs that we have, because I've been watching their messaging and I've been watching their response to some of this stuff. And I'm just so proud to be from here and that messages like the one that I was writing with my old man back in 2006 and 2007 were heard up here. They may not have been heard all around, but they were heard up here. And it's, it's something we're going to continually be working on. And I think this is an opportunity for us as a society to recalibrate and to refocus some of our efforts. And I know with the good leadership that we have here in the police department and in other sections of the criminal justice system here in the county that we're, we're in pretty good hands and there are people here who are going to have an honest conversation about the difficult issues that we face. I can't talk about specific cases because of where I work. There'll come a time where where I can, and I'd be happy to share more thoughts at that point in time. But I think the overarching message is that this is a, as, as much as it's a tragedy, it's a wonderful opportunity to make the system, the criminal justice system and the way we do things, a much better place for our children. So we have to seize that opportunity. And that's the thing I wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geiser.
Yeah, I, I have two things and I, that is one of them. And, you know, as an elected official, you know, one of the things that we can do is, you know, affect our own community, right? And, you know, I think, you know, it always chokes me up a little bit when Chief Wise hands out a new badge and we have a new police officer, he always talks about how the badge is entrusted to them by the citizens of our community.
The citizens' badge.
And it's the citizens' badge. And, and with that, it's a mindset and a, a method and a culture of how I believe our police department goes about their, their policing. You know, to that end, I also feel that I may be not as informed as I could be, you know, and to look at, are we asking all the right questions? Do we have, you know, the right, you know, escalation procedures? Do we have the right policies and procedures? Do we have the training? Do they have, within our police department, what they need to be successful and maintain that positive culture? And so I've encouraged both the police chief and our city manager that I'd like to make sure that we're having that dialogue to kind of do a health check and make sure that we're doing everything as a council to make sure that we've got that healthy environment. And that now it's coming up on budget time and, you know, we want to make sure that we're not reacting to something bad. I want to be proactive and ensure that we never get to that point. So, you know, that is, is something, because what happened to Mr. Floyd was horrific. And it, we need to do whatever we can to make sure that we are anti-racist and work to try and be elements of change. And, and you can, we can protest, but at some point, it needs to become policy. And, and we are in the position that we can help make sure that those kinds of thing, that we can make policy in our city to ensure that, that we are anti-racist in how we go about our policing. So, if anybody else wanted to talk on that topic, or I have one other thing?
Chief Wise?
Mr. Mayor, actually, given the council wants to have this discussion, I wonder if you wouldn't mind indulging me to seize the moment?
Mm-hmm.
All right, because I think what council's talking about clearly is on the minds of a number of people. And I've received a few emails. And I received one today that I responded to that sort of captured the essence of what we're talking about. And I thought I'd, I think it would maybe encapsulate in a good way my response so that you could know where I'm at. And I'll start off by saying I have no insider knowledge about anything that happened in Minneapolis. I'm, I'm a police officer in Coon Rapids. So with that, so the email I received, "Dear Coon Rapids PD, in light of the murder of George Floyd and the ongoing issues of police violence against black people, I in the community of Coon Rapids need to hear from you because healing starts close to home. I need to hear that the police in my community can see that there is no ambiguity here and what happened to George Floyd was inexcusable. I need to know that the officers of the Coon Rapids Police Department care about my neighbors, all of them. How is the Coon Rapids Police Department going to ensure its officers are held to the highest standards? How will complaints against officers be handled differently going forward to ensure patterns of bias or questionable conduct are addressed before something tragic occurs? How will junior officers be trained to handle a situation where a senior officer on the scene is being unethical, abusive, or using excessive force? Change must happen. Continuing as normal is unacceptable. I know we, as a community, will not get it right overnight, but we have to start work, the hard work of listening, learning, and changing." So my response to her, "No person, police officers included, of a sound mind defends the action of any of those four former officers, myself included. Derek Chauvin murdered Mr. Floyd, and the other three officers aided and abetted the murder by failing to intervene. All are guilty. I have been a police officer in Coon Rapids for 25 years and was specifically trained in 1994 to never kneel on the neck of anyone. While I can't speak to a time before that, no officer in Minnesota since then has ever been trained to kneel on a neck as that maneuver can kill. In addition, no Coon Rapids officer would ever tolerate unethical, illegal behavior of a coworker. It does not happen in professionally-run law enforcement organizations like Coon Rapids PD. I can't speak to the ethics of Minneapolis PD as it certainly appears as if none of the other three officers spoke up in a way to prevent that crime, even though they had to know what they were doing was wrong. I imagine that right now, the murderer, Derek Chauvin, wished one of those other three had stepped up to stop him. He will have plenty of time to think about that in prison. We probably will never know. I hate that this murder was committed by those who shared my profession, as I know that many people will look at me differently as a result. Sometimes I can sense people wondering whether I, too, am capable of killing an innocent person. That haunts me. I worked very hard to earn my reputation and the reputation of this department, yet officers I've never met have tarnished me and us. My hope is that someday people could see a rogue, or see rogue police officers like they do rogue physicians. Bad physicians sometimes kill people through negligence, incompetence, racism, or they're just plain dumb. But when those incidents happen, the malfeasance gets linked to the name of the doctor rather than the profession as a whole. There are amazing, kind-hearted, compassionate men and women that work here. I wish you could somehow get to know them all, as I think it would provide you a great deal of comfort. Warm regards, Brad."
That is exactly the kind of leadership that I'm talking about.
Yep.
And the empathy that is so very necessary in this time. Thank you for responding in that manner.
And I just want to add, this letter isn't the end of a community conversation, clearly. It's the beginning.
Chief Wise, thank you very much. Thank you.
And I think that, Chief Wise, that, you know, I speak for myself and I hope for the rest of the council that we are here to make sure that we don't have stressful officers, that we don't get into positions, you know, and so that we want to make sure that we are hearing the needs of our police department to make sure that we're supporting you in any way that we can, because what you've got is a great department and we want to keep it that way.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
It's really hard to go on after that one.
I know. And I have one other
Hate to mess it up.
Yeah.
Careful.
Yeah, the one other thing, I have continued to get calls and emails on the Saturday cruise. And it may not affect everybody else's wards, but it drives right through Ward Four, and it is loud. And there are people doing burnouts and there are people urinating behind buildings. And every, I've gotten, the only, some, the only positive comment I had was when the organizer of the event called to say, you know, how are things going? And I told him. Every call, every email that I have received has been negative. And, you know, and to that end, I, I don't begrudge people driving on the Boulevard. I think, you know, that should be fine, but we've got to be able to look at where are the things that we are doing to stop those behaviors that are destructive to our community, right? And, and in light of everything we just talked about, it's very minimal that some, that it's a loud noise. If that's the biggest of our worries in our town, okay. But, so if we can talk about the kinds of things that we're doing to help make it pleasant for people, I would appreciate that.
Yeah. Yeah, Chief, I was just gonna, I was just gonna mention before you, I, I spent two and a half hours working, or not working, working, two and a half hours sitting at the curb with, with, with a couple of my brothers watching the cruise. And there was, and it was, it really was great. It was really great, except all of a sudden, there was like about this 12 motorcycles going by, just right on the governor, just making as lo, as much noise as they can. And so that was an annoyance. And then there was one car that was out there that was, you know, they can do this thing where they can make a backfire. And unfortunately, you know, it doesn't bother me, but unfortunately, that bothers dogs. So we've got a few, you know, residents, they're, they're being bothered by their dogs. They're, they're trying to get people to stop early. You know, that's the, I love their message, you don't have to go home at nine, but you can't stay here, you know? And this week, it was even earlier because of the curfew, but.
Have you seen people drag racing on Mississippi Boulevard? That's the other, one other complaint that I've had.
I haven't. I mean, we, we always have a certain amount of people that hot-rot on Mississippi.
Right. Yeah. But, you know, it, it's looking at how can we make sure that it's safe as well.
Okay. Chief Wise, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, counsel, I hear about it, too, clearly. The so-called Saturday Night Cruise, it's important for people to remember, is not an event sanctioned by the city of Coon Rapids. Frankly, it's not sanctioned by any organization. It's a Facebook post that went viral to classic car owners, and they've taken up driving on Coon Rapids Boulevard, Boulevard on Saturdays. That said, it always is helpful to talk about some of the statistics, because I promised you we would be out there, and there have been officers that have been out there. On May 16th, we wrote 60 citations for various offenses, including one drunk driving, and there was at least two noise citations written. May 23rd, we had 33 citations that were written. And in addition, the, the person who made the original Facebook post has reached out to a variety of his members, and he has forwarded me both photographs and stories of cars that have been driving in a way that's not consistent with the values of the people who want to be out there. And I personally have called those individuals that he has given me. Some people are happy to hear from me and want to change the way they drive. Some people are less enthusiastic with my opinion.
But I want to assure you, as staffing allows us that, we will continue to be out there
and we will continue to cite people for these offenses, because I do know that the, the person who started this viral post had nothing but the best of intentions. And, and his fear all along was for rogues that would come along and ruin it. And so we're trying to pluck those people out like weeds, and we're going to continue working at that. So I hope lots of people hear that. We, we will continue to pluck those weeds.
Good. And he's a Coon Rapids resident, too.
That is correct. Yep.
And, Mr. Mayor, one of the other questions was on the food trucks. And Ms. Lenzbauer, can you talk about the licensing and if we're checking on those?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Geiser, yes, we currently have three food trucks or two, two different food trucks. One has two locations that are licensed and following the requirements, and I'm working with the police department. When they see one that they're not sure about, that isn't on the list that we've given them, they take a picture, send it to us, and we follow up. So, yes, we are all over that.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. I had the opportunity to commend one of your officers. There was a stop literally right in front of us. And I, and I, so I just watched, sat there and watched, and he walked up there with a big smile on his face, and he was just so pleasant to them. I, I think whatever it was must have been a minor incident. It was an older couple, I mean, older than me even. And, and you could tell he wasn't comfortable getting pulled over. The officer just put him at ease. And I, after the guy drove away, I, I walked over back to the squad and I said, nicely done. It was like, oh, you're here. So, that was, it's a nice evening. We, if there's just some way we can reel in the, the late ones and the noisy ones and, yeah. Thank you.
You do it 4:30 every day. That one's way better.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody, I, I mean, I get, I don't get emails, but I, when I run into people, that's when I get the, the positive feedback. You know, it's just, they love the, the rolling, rolling car show. All right. Any other business to come before council?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Decker to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.